It's nine o'clock. We will call the October 30th, 2018 Sterns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call will show that all commissioners are present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation on the ground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is a public access forum. Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak at the public access forum for items that are not on today's agenda? Anyone? Seeing no one, go to item two, or consent, which is a consent item, item B. We do have two additions to that consent item. What are your wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent items with the two additional items in the packet. One is to accept a $25,000 grant from the Landon Foundation for broadband feasibility study and authorize a study. And the other one is to approve a purchase of additional items for an X-ray scanner for the sheriff's office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just on the X-ray scanner, there's some additional equipment that's going to be needed, and that's going to come from their vehicle storage account that has some money in it. That's where that will come from.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We are now up to item C, which is Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. We have Chris Henig and Dan Laisser, I believe, right?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dan Laisser, I'm the Central Region Manager with the Division of Ecological and Water Resources. And I have Chris Henig here, he's one of our ecologists and SNA specialist.
List with the Central Region as well. We're here today to talk to you and seek your approval for an addition to our Avon Hills SNA. And with that, I'll turn things over to Chris here to provide you an overview of the addition that we're seeking today.
Well, thanks again for having us. So the main objective of the Scientific and Natural Areas Program is to protect the highest quality examples of Minnesota's remaining natural heritage. The sites we often protect include rare animal and plant species, extremely high-quality examples of native plant communities, and in some circumstances, unique geologic features that are found in very few locations across the state. In order to protect these examples of Minnesota's natural heritage, the SNA program works with willing private landowners to protect their land through acquisition by the Department of Natural Resources and designate these lands as Scientific and Natural Areas. Scientific Natural Areas are afforded one of the highest degrees of protection that state lands can receive. So the site we are proposing to acquire to you all today is currently owned by the St. Cloud State University Foundation. It is adjacent to the Avon Hills Forest Scientific and Natural Area, which is composed of two units. So this unit in the north half, this little L shape, is the north unit, and we have a south unit just south of Highway 94. So the site totals approximately 125 acres, and the site contains some of the highest quality remaining unprotected blocks of native forest in Sterns County. This relatively mature forest provides excellent habitat for the state-listed red-shouldered hawks and cerulean warblers, as well as many other bird species and other plant and animal species. The plant community is very diverse and currently shows very little evidence of non-native invasive species on the property. These lands are protected would improve access to high-quality public lands for the enjoyment of current and future residents of Sterns County and Minnesota. So, public uses vary with every SNA, but typically include natural nature observation, educational and scientific opportunities, and other forms of nonconsumptive uses. Most visitors use these sites for hiking, photography, bird and other wildlife watching, and snowshoeing and cross-country skiing. At this site, deer hunting by bow would be allowed within this site. So as mentioned in your packet today, the DNR estimates the PILT payment for this parcel would be $1,252.50 per year. And at present, the county receives no taxes for this property and has not since at least 2013. So with that, I welcome any questions or comments you would like to provide in light of our request, and thank you for this opportunity to present to you today. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm extremely pleased to see this proposal, and I'm just wondering, has there been any opposition at all from any side? Are there any downsides at all to this?
Well, we certainly haven't received any negative comments about the process. You know, we've worked with the Avon Hills Initiative, we've communicated with the Avon Hills Township, or Avon Township, and they're very supportive of the process. So, in general, it's been very supportive.
Yeah, I mean, just an asset we'll see for generations, so.
Commissioner Merrick.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move approval of the recommended action.
Second.
Moving seconded, I do have several questions. How many? I have talked to both Dan and Chris before, and so they know what questions I'm probably going to ask here. So, how many acres does Sterns, does the DNR own in Sterns County right now?
The DNR owns approximately 10,000 acres in Sterns County, about 1% of the public ownership. There is an additional 1% of public ownership beyond the DNR. That would be like US Fish and Wildlife, tax forfeit, other lands like that.
Okay. My question is going to be, is when is enough off of the taxpayer's rules enough? Now, I'm going to support this one today because it puts it back on the taxpayer's rules. But I wonder when this is going to be enough is enough.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I gave a lot of thought to your question, Commissioner, and, you know, even though the department doesn't set specific acre goals and targets, instead, we work with the citizens to ensure the state's land base meets the recreational needs of its citizens, continues to provide ecological benefits like clean air and water, supports natural resource-based economies, and maintains habitat for a broad variety of fish and wildlife. The DNR does employ a strategic land asset management program, which it uses to manage its holdings on behalf of the citizens of Minnesota. We're continually trying to strive and make efficiencies. We do that via purchases, sales, and exchanges. We do have some very specific goals and strategies when it comes to purchasing public lands. Some of those include protecting significant natural resources, including rare resources like we have at Avon Hills. We target conservation of Minnesota's native prairie and grasslands. We consolidate state land to create more contiguous blocks of public ownership. We improve access to existing state lands. And we also strive to provide more high-quality outdoor recreation opportunities, all of which we also strive to meet our fiduciary responsibilities to the school and university trust. Some of the strategies that we use to accomplish that are to hold and manage these lands that meet public recreation and conservation needs. We do exchange land with partners to consolidate and reduce the number of isolated parcels. We sell lands when they no longer meet conservation and recreation purposes, and we reinvest that income into higher priority areas. And we purchase new land from willing sellers to meet the state land management goals. You know, I will write, on November 1st, where the DNR is holding the third of its three public auctions for putting parcels up for sale, we had about 16 parcels across the state totaling about 450 acres. And so, we do routinely look at our strategic assets and apply those goals and strategies to meeting those needs.
So you put them back in the private sector?
They go back in the private ownership.
Okay. Because that was one question I did have, I was looking at your list here as I went through this, and one that you have on here is a Cole Spring heron collet. Personally, I haven't seen, maybe I missed them, but I haven't seen a heron there in quite some time. So, what's the future, what do you foresee as a future there?
Yeah, I mean, you're spot on. I mean, there used to be a heron rookery there, which no longer is active, but there are other uses, other resources there that are benefiting the SNA. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we can't specifically look at that SNA.
Okay, thank you. And this is not Avon, but I have township supervisors in the past, not from Avon Township, that have asked me, that said, "DNR is not good neighbors," is what they told me, "they just aren't good neighbors." Said, "For one thing, they don't clean up ditches, they don't clean the ditches out when there's fallen things, and all you have to do is go north of Holdingport on County Road 17, I believe it is, and look north there, and look at that ditch, and how it holds back water and so on." And another thing, they say, that they don't clean up the underbrush, and that gets to be a fire hazard. And when there is a fire, they're supposed to get reimbursed, but according to them, it pretty much is an act of Congress to do that. And do you have any plans here for keeping this area at least somewhat free of fallen dead debris, which is a great fire hazard?
Well, specifically this site, I recognize your concerns, I certainly do. However, on this site, there really is very little kind of mid-story community, it's a very mature stand. There's, there is dead wood on the ground, much of this is very decayed and could even act as a fire break of sorts. It would be resistant to burning on that landscape. And just given the fact that it is kind of a music hardwood, a wetter system in general, you wouldn't generally experience fires in these areas.
Do you have any plans, though, to keep an eye out for that type of thing if it starts getting a lot?
Yes, sir. So, you know, we are actively managing these sites where we see those opportunities present themselves, or if the need does present itself.
Okay. If there is a fire, can you aid people for these communities in getting reimbursed within a timely manner rather than, because they are responsible for putting that fire out, the DNR doesn't come and do it, nor Fish and Wildlife, nor business forever?
Yeah, I think, you know, it all depends on how that fire was started. You know, typically with any fire, there's going to be an investigation to determine the cause of that fire. And, you know, so it varies. I mean, we'll certainly take responsibility if a fire was caused by department actions. We also work, you know, we do have a Fire Wise and Fire Suppression Program. It's primarily, you know, in our state forested areas of the state. But we continually, you know, provide up to 17 million acres of Minnesota forest lands and manage with prescribed fire. We actively prevent wildfires and wildfire-related damage.
Okay, what about additional road maintenance? That's been another issue that they've talked about, is that now there's more traffic and so on, and they don't get help with the additional wear and tear on the roads at townships.
Yeah. Well, I'll try to speak to that a little bit. You know, with the payment in lieu of taxes, that will, you know, help provide relief back to the township. One of the other programs that the department has, it's referred to as the State Park Road Account Program. And there's up to $4 million available via grants annually that the department administers. And eligible applicants include the county, townships, and city governments. And those are, some of the eligible projects is for reconstruction, improvement, repair, and maintenance of county, township, and city roads that provide access to public lakes, rivers, state parks, campgrounds, recreational areas. So there is an opportunity for reimbursement if there was damage that occurs, and the priorities are these roads that exactly what you're getting at, maybe you receive higher use around a WMA or a state recreation area, campground, things like that. So there are programs available to assist with that.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. And that's, I don't think that's a real well-known.
Yeah, there's actually, it's an annual calendar year funding, and typically, those grants are awarded in the spring. And I believe actually, the application deadline each year is the first of November. But as far as I'm aware, there's up to $4 million annually that is available for competitive grants.
One more thing. What's the reasoning here with bull hunting, but no firearm hunting?
So I'll speak to that. So, within the SNA programs network, we do provide opportunities where all forms of hunting are allowed. I believe 52 of our 167 Scientific and Natural Areas do have that form of recreation, all forms of hunting, trapping available to that. In addition, we have 12 additional SNA's that are, as in the case of Avon Hills Forest, restricted to bow hunting. SNA's are a little bit different from, say, state forest lands and wildlife management areas. The primary focus, the reason that this program was kind of established in the first place was to ensure protection for rare species, plants and animals, as well as, you know, high-quality examples of native plant communities, amongst other things. And so the focus of our management is really on ensuring the protection and conservation of those resources. It is true that deer can browse some of these, you know, native plants, and so, you know, in the case of Avon Hills Forest, we've allowed bow hunting because we feel that it does help achieve that management goal. But in allowing that, we haven't seen any additional needs to really expand that.
But what's the reason why bull hunting versus not firearm hunting?
Oh, well, again, I think it's more to the point that we manage for the native plant communities and the rare species that are present in these areas. And that's why people come to visit these sites, by and large, is for the fact that there are high-quality examples of this natural heritage of Minnesota.
So you're talking about plants?
Native plant communities, plants, animals, yes.
So bull hunters step on less plants than firearm hunters?
Absolutely not. No, I, sir, I'm a hunter, I rifle hunt as well. You know, the, I don't believe that, you know, hunters use the area differently than one another. But my point is that the management goals, which is the high-quality communities, are met by allowing bow hunters in.
Sometimes I think also there are landowner wishes that are honored with some of these SNA requests, you know, specifically to not allow hunting in some cases, or landowners may have concerns for whatever reason, for various uses. But like what Chris mentioned early on, I think SNA's are set up a little bit unique, where some forms of recreation and hunting typically aren't allowed. You know, we do have other recreation areas, as Chris noted, with state forests, wildlife management areas, sometimes state parks, that do allow more hunting opportunities. I will say that SNA's have expanded those opportunities in many instances, but they are a little bit different. So it's not so much that it's a difference between bow hunting versus firearms hunting.
Commissioner Merrick. As I was speaking, when Commissioner Mergon asked about the road maintenance, and you talk about a grant program that's available, I would request that in summary form, you share correspondence with our administration, that they can share with the townships in Sterns County, and maybe even with Minnesota Association of Townships, so they can share it throughout the state. I think that's an unknown for many townships, so if you could do that.
Yeah, I could actually leave you with a summary information sheet, you know, right today, and it is, this information is directly available on our DNR website, but I'm happy to leave you this information here today.
Right, something that townships could follow up on, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Chris. We are up to. Yeah, yes, yes, with Dr. Williams here. We are on item D, which is Public Works, we have Jody Tyke here. Good morning.
I have two items for you today, both of which are final payments on contracts. The first contract is SAP 073-678-007, and this was the County Roads 78 and 133 traffic signal in Sartell, just on the west side of the Sartell Bridge. That contract underran by $11,260.70, and I'm asking the board to authorize final payment.
I'll move the request.
It's moved, is there a second? I can second that. Moving seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
My next item, another final contract payment, is for the 2018 SealCoat contract. Of this total contract amount, just over $52,000 was for the county parking lots included in the county CIP. $23,594 was for work in Linden Township that they had requested, and they are reimbursing us for. And just under $970,000 was for our actual county road system. We did overrun the contract because of the bid prices, we wanted to use up our full SealCoat budget amount to get as many roads done as possible. So I am asking the board to approve and authorize final payment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moving second, discussion. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just have a very brief informational item under miscellaneous. The state did authorize $35 million of additional money for the local road improvement program. Avon Township and the City of St. Stephen were both awarded LRIP grants for projects they submitted during the last request for applications. So Norway Road in Avon Township will be improved, and Town Line Road or Sixth Avenue in St. Stephen will be widened and improved as well. So those projects, I believe, are going to go in 2019. So our townships in small cities did fare very well with the local road improvement program.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrick.
Thank you. On the Norway Road Improvement, there's a railroad that crosses diagonally in that area, and I think there was a bad accident or maybe even a fatality some time ago. So when you talk about improvements, will there be something done with that rail crossing?
The portion in Avon Township.
Or is that in another township?
That may be in a different area, because the portion in Avon Township, they submitted for pavement reclamation and resurfacing with some shoulder widening.
Okay, maybe it's just out of the area then. I'm familiar with that roadside. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Persky. Jody, I'm pleased to hear about Town Line Road. Exactly how long of a piece is that, do you know, approximately? Is it to the end of the city limits?
It's all the way to the end of the city limits where it meets up with Brockway Township. It is the next east-west road that connects over to Pine Cone Road. That's a Brockway Township road, so it'll get down to that. And Brockway Township's portion, although not having six-foot shoulders, but it does have three-to-four-foot shoulders in their section, so they're going to have a decent portion to, where it'll be a new route to the new school, or an improved route to the new school.
Yeah, that's, with the new school, that's very encouraging, so good to see that, yeah.
Anyone else?
One last thing.
Commissioner Persky.
You know what, being a mayor in Sartell and always looking forward to winter, how are we sitting with salt and the availability for salt?
We have been filling up our salt sheds, mixing our salts, and I believe we're ready, everything but the plows on the trucks.
And no shortage foreseen?
Not at this point.
Good. Hopefully, we won't use very much.
That's our hope.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
We're up to Human Resources, item E. We have Jennifer Thorson, Steve Hammers, Sharon Westhoff, and Rod Kelsey here.
Good morning. I'm Steve Hammers, the Assistant Administrator. And as Commissioner Mergon indicated, we have with us today Jennifer Thorsten, the HR Director, Sharon Westhoff, the Assistant Human Resources Director, and Rod Kelsey, who is the county's compensation and classification consultant. Before we have Rod get into the details of the first part, first year of our triennial review, I just have a few comments for the board. His introduction. One, we've been using Rod Kelsey and his system for over 10 years. He's a classification consultant who's been in the industry for about 40 years or so. And, again, we've been very pleased in working with him for over the past decade. The county board authorized going forward with a triennial review of all the classifications in the county back in 2017, when they adopted the new triennial review policy. That, again, is looking at all of our classifications over three years. So in the first year, we were looking at the clerical, paraprofessional, support services, and skilled labor job families. In year two, we are going to be moving forward with law enforcement, professional, and technical classifications. And in year three, we are going to be looking at the management and supervisory job classifications. So for year one, the job analysis kicked off in April. There were about 250 employees in all the job classifications that are impacted in year one, and they turned in 90 different job description questionnaires. And again, they could work either individually or in groups, and so that's how we got to the 90 that were turned in. For the job classifications in year one, there were 54 job classifications out of our 186 that were identified as being part of the job families in year one. And as a result of the reviews for this year, we are able to eliminate or consolidate those down to 48 job classifications going forward. Of the 54 job classifications that... forward. Of the 54 job classifications that were, um, looked at this year, 15 of those job classifications have a recommended change in their job that indicates a change significant enough to change their grade. Uh, obviously, um, you can have changes in the point values in, in a job that does, don't necessarily equate to having a job that creates a change in their grade, uh, just additional points. The implication of, of the, of the results for this first year is that 35 positions in the county are going to be impacted. The cost of implementing the changes for those positions will be $75,000. Uh, positions that, um, individuals feel did not get a tough enough review will have an opportunity to do an appeals process, and Mr. Kelsey can talk about the appeals process that will be moving forward in November. And the effective date for any changes will be January 1st of 2019. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelsey.
Thank you very much. If you would look at your packets, please, I'd ask you to just take a moment and read the first, uh, page, uh, year one background summary. Uh, we'll give a context to my, uh, following comments. We'll just take a moment, if you would, and read that.
Are we supposed to think, too?
It may raise questions. the nature and the highly interactive nature of what we did together. Um, the process here has always been to involve employees and the management team in working on the documentation of jobs. And all of this eventually leads to the updating of job descriptions. HR works diligently to keep those up to date, and, uh, and I would say an excellent job has been done. But my, for my part, I, uh, got all of the job description questionnaires that were filled out, and as Steve said, there were a lot of them, a lot of information. And there is a sign-off methodology, so that the management team reviews what employees are putting in their job description questionnaires. And in some cases, they'll say to employees, "I don't agree with this," and they'll make notes, and I have those. Or they'll say, "I think you missed something here." So it's, it's, it's a good balance between what the employees see from their perspective, and not all of them see the same perspective, even though they might hold the same classification. So it's a, it's a very involved type of process, but it's a good process, and has been followed for all these years. A lot of the things that are being done in the triennial review process have been done, and, and all of these things are, uh, relevant to it. The, uh, are there any questions on that first page? The second page is just for your reference. It's a summary of the job evaluation system factors that we use in, in our system and, and were used, uh, originally back in '07. And I just wanted you to have this because the nature of evaluating jobs is entirely separate from who may be holding the job, and that's something we always try to stress. Individuals, if you have a dozen individuals holding the same class, his or her background of those individuals may be different, and what they bring to the county in terms of skill sets and the rest. Now, they have to meet the minimum qualifications. But beyond that, there are a lot of differences, as we know, with how people carry out their jobs and how they do their jobs. So apart from any of that, on an individual basis, we apply these five factors, and that leads to a point system, and then a series of grades or, um, grades with point spreads to them. And so currently, the county has a total of 40 grade levels. They're not all used. It's, the first, uh, position starts in grade three, and the top one, which is your county administrator, ends in grade 38. So that is something that is kept stable and is kept in place, so that when things do change, we have a common reference point to the position of each class in the overall roster. So it's, uh, it's just a matter of, of your having this as a reference point and knowing that it is a, not only an independent, but is completely, uh, separate from individuals. Any, any question on that one? Okay. The next one, we'll go through in some detail, the summary of the 48 classes that Stephen referred to. And I'll just go through them rather quickly. You can tell on the left is the classification title and any related information, such as title changes, the current grade, and the proposed grade, um, based on my analysis of the job description questionnaires and review of the internal data. So we start there with the Office Specialist, uh, one and two. I'm suggesting there a consolidation of that OS one and two, and the title then would be Office Specialist one at a grade eight. So in other words, we are basically saying that the job that had been in grade seven looks a lot like that that's in grade eight. And one of the things that we wanted to look at in this year and in subsequent years is some chance for consolidation, if it makes sense. In this case, I think it does. And so they will both be, uh, called Office Specialist one and in grade eight. Custodian, there is no change. Eight and eight. Account Tech, 10 and 10, no change. The next consolidation is the Office Specialist three and Office Specialist four. There is a lot of overlap there between those two, and it made sense after studying the JDQs and the commentary in the JDQs that we consolidate that three and four to be called Office Specialist two. One was a nine, one was a 10. They will both be 10s. And so we have the Office Specialist one at eight, and the next one at 10. The next is a title change, no change in grade. Public Service Specialist two. There is no level one in that, so it made sense to call it a Public Service Specialist, as the title changes, by the way, have no effect on the classification grading. Uh, sometimes, uh, folks like to think about a different title, perhaps, that might lead them to a classification change, but that is not the case. Uh, titling is done in a combination of ways, and some of these title changes came out of the JDQ process, where the employees said, "I don't think this is a particularly accurate job title," and so we took that into consideration. Stephen did some benchmarking on what others, other counties you use for your benchmarks are doing with titling. This titling is a, is an evolutionary thing and a, and a lot of changes. So there were several different sources for these title changes. Uh, the next job then, Land Records Tech two is consolidated with the Office Specialist Senior. That seems to be, in terms of the defined skill sets, a good match, and is another place where this standalone Land Records Tech two, uh, was sort of standing out with itself. So, uh, we think it's wise to change the title and consolidate it into the Senior Office Specialist. It stays at a grade 11. The Office Specialist Senior stays at grade 11. Process Specialist stays at grade 12. Property Room Tech at grade 12. Public Service Specialist Senior at grade 12. Legal Secretary, this is a example of a change that was made at the recommendation of the employees in that job, in Legal Secretary one, and also the supervisors, uh, also supporting that. So it stays in a grade 12, but it is changed to Legal Assistant. The next job, Assessing Tech, is in fact a job that went up a level from a grade 11 to a grade 12. The rest of those, Account Tech Senior stays at 12, Administrative Assistant one at 12, Payroll Tech at 13, Community Health Worker at 13, and Fiscal Service Specialist at 14. Do you have any questions on that page? Yes, sir?
Yeah, um, if you go to your, one where you changed the Public Service Specialist two to Public Service Specialist one, well, no, not that one. The one after that, you changed the Land Records Technician to Senior Office Specialist two?
Yes.
Isn't the very next one the same thing, just moving Senior from the front to the back?
We're con, we're consolidating it, yes. The Office Specialist Senior or Senior Office Specialist, that title shows up two ways in the roster, and so that's the way I got it. And, but it's the same thing.
So one of them will go, will fall off.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, that's right. I just wanted to make sure that we could capture the fact that Land Records Tech two was going to go away as a title, uh, and would be consolidated in. Okay. Hope that's not too confusing. All right, page two. The Legal Secretary two, uh, obvious to Senior Legal Assistant, again, a recommendation by the employees there and supported by the management, grade 14, no change in the grading. Financial Worker, a title change, no change in grading, but it will be called Eligibility Specialist, and I believe that's one that, uh, came out of the benchmarking that you did, isn't it, Stephen? And, and makes more sense, and, uh, there was some commentary, if I remember right, uh, in the JDQs as well. Land Record Specialist, same at 15. Case Aid, grade 15. Collection Officer, 15. Administrative Assistant, three. There is no Administrative Assistant two class, so the three will be re-titled to Administrative Assistant two. That doesn't suggest any downgrade, because there isn't any. Uh, it will stay at a grade 15. Sign Tech stays at 15. Building Facilities Maintenance Tech at 15. Child Support Officer at 15. Maintenance Worker Highway, as well as Maintenance Worker Park, stay at 15. Surveillance Tech at 16. The next change in grade then is the buyer, from 15 to 16. And the, uh, just to review quickly, when I go through the JDQs, one of the things that, that you would see in the JDQ outline is it asks the question, "What does this job look like now compared to two things? The original job description, or the official, I call it, job description that's on the books and on the website. And secondly, how does it relate to the five job evaluation factors?" And so we ask individuals to comment directly on, "How does this, this job relate to the current statement of skills and abilities required, minimum qualifications? How does it relate to decision-making? How does it relate all the way through?" And so the, uh, the employees and the management team become quite familiar with the factors that are used in evaluating their jobs. That's a plus, not a minus, because the more they can understand that, the better. Now, uh, do we pass out points? No. And I recommend that not be done, uh, because that is something, um, primarily because of pay equity. Now, the pay equity law, which was, of course, has been since 1984, that's a long time ago, and, and it's really not an issue for many classification holders anymore in the public sector. But the reason I say that it's not, uh, you don't pass out the points, is because under the pay equity law, classifications are not negotiable. So that, the purview stays with the county to define the jobs, to change the jobs, to change the titles, to vacate jobs, and any other restructuring that may be done. So, and we'll mention that when I get to the, uh, review process. Um, so we get down to the bottom here, and the next one is Building Facilities Carpenter goes up from a 15 to a 16. The Senior Payroll Tech goes from 15 to a 16. Mechanic stays the same at 17. And Welder goes from 16 to 17. Recreation Coordinator in the jail goes from 16 to 17. And Child Support Specialist stays at 17. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir?
What's the difference between a Legal Assistant and a Paralegal?
The, um, Legal Secretaries and Legal Assistants are, are, um, the ones who do a lot of the background work. Paral, but there's a different degree set and a, and a different educational, uh, component for each one. Paralegals, there are specific degrees for paralegals that you can get. Legal Secretaries, there's a different educational path you can get. And I, I'm sorry, you're gonna stump me on the explicit difference between what they do on a day-to-day basis, but, um, there is a difference in terms of the educational background for those jobs.
There is a, uh, in, in both of those jobs, the primary focus is the support of the attorneys. The difference is that, uh, over a period of time, and we'll see that when we come to the paralegal, because that's one of the jobs that went up a grade, over a period of time, the attorneys with their caseloads have asked and required, uh, both the legal assistants, as well as the paralegals, to do more preparation for them. And in particular, the paralegal job, and that's one of the reasons that, that I think it's legitimate to raise at a level, there is a lot more work there in terms of the preparation, paperwork, calling around. There's a lot of contact, inside and outside work, and the preparation of the necessary papers that, depending on which division of the attorney's office you're in, uh, that you do for the attorneys. So there, uh, there is a linkage there, because they're both support, but there's a clear separation in terms of the detail work that they do and the background skills that they need in order to get that done. Is that a fair way to say that? The, uh, page three, the Financial Program Specialist, change that title to Senior Eligibility Specialist, stays the same grade. Electrician, Journeyman, goes up from 16 to 17. Park Maintenance Coordinator from 17 to 18. Paralegal, I just talked about, from 17 to 18. Victim Assistance Coordinator from 17 to 18. Park Operations Coordinator stays the same at 18. Assistant Veteran Service Officer from 17 to 18. Case Coordinator, 19. And Master Plumber and Master Electrician, uh, go up two grades. Uh, you may say, hm, these others, the change only went up a grade, how come two grades? Because of two things. Referencing the evolution of those jobs and the nature of what they are going to be doing in terms of, well, first of all, skill sets. Make sure that we've got that nailed down right, and there was a, a change in the official, uh, documentation of those skill sets. In other words, more experience. And the second piece of it is the role that they are currently taking and the role that they will be taking on your internal construction projects, uh, that are coming forward. So there was, there were two or three different elements as they rolled out the JDQs that, that came up there. And they were, in fact, um, relatively, uh, some of the documentation, the old documentation needed to be updated, and so there was a fair amount of updating. That's the reason for the two grades instead of the previous pattern, which seems to be one. So we ended up with a couple of consolidations, 13 grade changes per se, and about nine title changes or revisions based on what I went through, uh, with you. So questions on this particular document?
Just out of curiosity, there, there's only Master Plumber. There's no, isn't there a Journeyman Plumber?
The county doesn't currently have, uh, other classifications that require... A plumbing license. We have other staff who do, do some plumbing work, but they don't, we're not requiring a plumbing license for that work. The master's the only one that's required to carry a license.
Okay, thanks.
Just an observation here. I counted 15 changes with the two combining, and every one was an upgrade.
There were no downgrades.
That was just my observation, yeah.
The next thing I'd like you to look at is the, called the Request for Review and Reconsideration. This is the appeals process, and this has been followed throughout all the years as well. Even though historically, the review process that I got involved in would, again, I'd be sent a JDQ, and I'd send back a recommendation with it. But there was always the opportunity, if somebody requested it, to have a review process done, except in the, in the, in the case when we did the original study. And you'll see that as, I won't read all this to you, you, this is a reference piece, but the final paragraph on the front page says, one, "The final disposition of an RRR is completed." In other words, when it's been reviewed and it's either been recommended, this is my role, or denied, I, maybe that's not the, it's too harsh a term, or, but not, not supported, then no, no further or additional RRR should be submitted for the same class unless the county restructures or redefines that class, because that's important. Because that's important. I learned early on, about forty years ago, I guess, in this work, that one of the things we needed to do was say, we give everybody a chance. But once you've had that chance, don't come back to the well, if you will, repeatedly. Uh, that just, that, that's not fair to incumbents. It puts additional stress on supervisors that they shouldn't have within the context of this. And it's not fair to HR either. You can't have people just coming back all the time, saying, well, maybe I should explain it a little bit better than I did the last time. And I know from experience, what happens is you don't get much new information. If you're honest upfront, and this time, we're gonna start that, and we have a, the RRRs have to be back by November the sixteenth, is that the right date? Uh, to me, and then I take a look at them, I say, alright, I've got the original JDQ here. Here's the request, and, and we say, what it is, the RRR is a documented disagreement. You know, Rod, you didn't do this right, in our opinion. So, here's what we told you. And now, in this document, here's why we think you missed something. And specifically, what did you miss? And there's also a chance to say, well, if you don't agree with the classification's current grade level, where do you think it ought to go? Now, over a period of time, an organization gets used to doing this. And so, early on, the first time you go through it, somebody says, well, it was a grade eight. I think it should be a grade fourteen. People get educated, so they know that multiple jumps like that, unless it's an entirely new job, and there's a completely separate process for that, they know not to do that. So, there, the recommendation will be, I think it looks like this. And that's another good piece of the RRR process. Says, I see that you reviewed this job here, and you raised it a level. I think our job looks that way too, for these reasons. Go back to the original JDQs, read those. Is that true? Maybe yes, maybe no. So, it's a, it's, again, a pretty intensive process, but everybody gets a chance to, to say their piece, and they know what the outcome will, will be. So that's the, uh, that's the process of the, uh, appeal. Anything else that, that I could comment on that would be of help?
Anyone else? Mr. Notch?
Uh, the only thing I would think would be kind of interesting is on each of your classifications, if you, and this would just be a reference, like, how many employees fall into each one of those? Because you said there's two fifty, two hundred and fifty in this group. Be interesting to see how many are on each head. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to add is I'd say thank you for, to staff and to Rod for going through this. I serve on the classic, Classification Advisory Team, along with our Human Services Administrator and our Veteran Service Officer. And we went through some of, some of the very same things that you're seeing here today, you know, several weeks ago. And, uh, and this is an outgrowth from something that happened, I don't know, quite a few years ago, when we hired new people in the Veteran Service Office, and found out that jobs that they were doing were similar to jobs in Human Services, and there was a difference in pay. And that started us discussing about how we can stay more current. And the triennial review process, where we look at one-third of the jobs every year. So in three years, we've gone through everything, keeps us more current, so we don't go for twenty years and find out people are way out of line, and we have to make huge adjustments. So, uh, if you're comfortable, I'm gonna move, uh, approval of the recommended action.
Sir, a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye.
Aye.
Propose motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we are now in Environmental Services. Adam. Shelley Benson here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Board members.
Angie Hert.
Um, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We have a couple of items for you today, and I'll have Angie start off with her first item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Packet, page fifty-one, we have Planning Commission Recommendation for a rezoning, submitted by Highline Property Management LLC, for Pamela Jacobson, and if approved, enact ordinance five eighty-two. The Stearns County Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, uh, unanimously recommending approval of the rezoning for the findings of fact that are listed at the bottom of the page. This is a parcel located in Painesville Township. The property is about six acres, it's currently zoned R5, and the requested rezoning is to commercial. And as you can see on the map in your packet, it is adjacent to commercial, and the business looking at buying this property owns the business property to the north. So with that, if there are no objections, the recommendation would be to enact ordinance five eighty-two, and accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I'll move the recommended action.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Move and seconded discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye.
Aye.
Propose motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation for a conditional use permit application submitted by Hempyr Property LLC from Freeport. The recommended board action is to approve, as a recommended approval, of the Stearns County Planning Commission, and adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact.
We did have a couple of changes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, that are outlined in the packet. So if you look at packet page seventy-seven, there were some additional changes to the conditions, and I think we wanted to have a little bit of discussion, uh, related to that. And one of the changes would be, um, related to, um, hours, or time of operation, I think is a better way to say it, that they would like to operate from April fifteenth through, uh, October thirty-first. So that would be one change. Um, and then packet page seventy-seven also expresses, um, the change in conditions um, that Commissioner Notch, uh, Angie and myself and Becky went through. So I don't know how you'd like to discuss each of those?
Yes, sir, Notch?
Well, I guess if you just wanna go through and kinda, because there was, right, originally thirteen?
Conditions, yeah, and now we are at.
And if you just wanna explain, like, removing two and three, that they're already in the?
Right, so what we have is there are some standard conditions that were previously, um, within our conditional use permit, so, uh, that's why we're looking, um, at those specific conditions, number two and three. Construction and post-constru- uh, construction requirements. Um, number four, we reworded, um, to say, no fill shall be placed on the parcel within the delineated wetland area without first consulting Environmental Services Wetland Staff, unless the fill is for normal and routine maintenance of existing infrastructure. So essentially, if they have a path, they can maintain that path, they don't need to call. If they're trying to do something beyond that, within the delineated wetland area on the parcel, then they would need to call staff, and we would go through a process with them.
You're meaning something new?
Right, something new, correct. So, uh, they can maintain what they currently have.
And they have, and you have that current delineated map that was done, or that they have done, so.
Correct, so.
So they have a record.
Yes, there is a, and it's surveyed in, those are boundaries that are surveyed. So we have a delineation specifically for that site. Um, the west side of the property, um, may have had wetlands a long time ago, but essentially have been filled or impacted in a way, um, and, and don't need any additional delineation. So what they have is fine on their property, and the delineation is set. So we are good for that one. Um, remove condition five. Condition five is specifically a performance standard. Um, it's for all ag-oriented businesses, that they keep the site maintained, um, clean and, uh, managed. And that has not been an issue for this site. They have always managed it in a, in a clean and appropriate manner. Um, so it's just a standard performance standard. So we didn't think it was necessary to place specifically here, even though they do have to maintain it, but they've always maintained it, so there was no concern. Um, condition number eight, sets a threshold for a conditional use permit application, and when that would be needed. We recommended a fifty animal unit, um, allowance. They currently operate around the twenty-seven, twenty-eight animal unit threshold currently. So if they would expand past fifty animal units, or expand their property boundaries, that's when we would ask them to come back in for a, an amendment to that conditional use permit. So, they can always maintain within the current property boundaries, and keep doing additions to what they need to do. If they construct something, they need a construction permit. They would not have to come back for a conditional use permit, unless they would exceed their parcel boundary, or exceed an animal unit threshold. The Planning Commission, or staff had recommended fifty, because that's a registration number. Um, but if there's a difference, and you wanna go to a different animal unit threshold, that would be at the discretion of the board.
Isn't fifty because then the state gets involved if you're over that?
It's a state registration, so it's, yes. So that's, that's why we picked the fifty, because it seemed like a logical, um, breakpoint for, uh, registration, but it's not a requirement, you could certainly change that to a different number. So if you wanted fifty, you could certainly maintain it at fifty, that was the recommendation, um, of the Planning Commission, if you wanted to go. But, again, they'd have to operate all those animal units within the current parcel boundary. If they would exceed the parcel boundary by wanting to add additional land, or exceed those animals, that's when the conditional use permit would, we'd look to amend that conditional use permit. So it's not saying they can't expand, it's just when, when that trigger would happen. And they don't have a lot of excess room right now, I think they've got some plans for some things within their current parcel. But, um, adding a lot of animal units, or different animal units, would certainly, um, they may need to expand their land area, and then that would trigger the CUP as well. Does that make sense to the board? Okay. Um, and then, condition number twelve was hours of operation.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, have a question.
Yeah, but let's get through this particular.
Animal unit?
Yeah, situation, and I have an idea that may be merits pursuing, uh, consisting of what threshold would be appropriate for staff approval, as opposed to making people come back through the process. But, we'll chat about that when you're done with this.
Okay, so the last one that was talked about was hours of operation. Um, so we didn't need actual hours, we were just looking for, uh, when do you operate? So we changed it, removed the hours of operation, and just said, let's put a date. Um, and I think the last conversation Commissioner Notch had with the applicants was, I think they were looking for April fifteenth?
Yeah, unless April first is a better number.
April first is fine with us too. We don't have an objection to any of those dates.
I just, I, yeah, I'm just curious, uh, you know, by setting the date, oftentimes, you know, oftentimes seasonal weather uh, can change that, and I mean, if you're having an early spring, that gives you an opportunity to get more things done, and it, sometimes it's difficult, you know, to obviously predict the weather, and if you can have an operation, the weather's nice, it's fine, and those other times, you know, the winter comes early and closes you up early, so.
Right, so that's a, that's a.
Do dates have to be on here at all?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there would not have to be months of operation associated with this business. When we sat down with the applicants, we just talked about what do they currently operate. We did not get into specifics on whether or not they wanted months of operation part of their application. There, there's no requirement that an ag-oriented, is, ag-oriented business is seasonal.
Right, now, what other ag business has an open and shut date?
None that I'm aware of.
Don't know of any seasonal.
I would recommend that we remove the dates.
I would too.
Commissioner Fersky said, it's a lot on weather.
We don't have any objection to that, that's certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we can make that change. Um, and the only other thing that they had expressed was potentially utilizing for overnight, um, camping occasionally for some of the Boy Scouts. That falls into potentially some other provisions, so we just referenced the state statute. So as long as they're in compliance with that state, uh, camping and recreational section, uh, then we don't have any objection. And if they would want to go down that path, then we would work with our food, beverage, and lodging folks, um, to make sure that they were registered for the appropriate license. So that would be a process. But we don't have any objection to the idea of camping on the site.
Mr. Notch?
I don't know, I don't have any other questions, I mean.
Mr. Mayor?
The, the only question that I have, and I don't think it's the same, but, uh, maybe a month or two ago, we had some folks in where there were campers, and we were gonna, and we referred that to the Planning Commission, so was, is that issue different than recreational vehicles that's described here?
No, it's the same, it's the same concept. So you're allowed up to, uh, four recreational vehicles or tents, um, pretty much anytime you want to, to use for overnight on a particular site. Once you hit the threshold of five, and any, any operation of five tents or recreational vehicles or combination thereof, requires, by state statute, that they get a license. So then it becomes a camping area.
So this is all complaint, so this is all complaint with state statute? And what the other folks would have been, would have gone beyond what state statute allows?
Right, so if you exceed the five, five or more, then that puts you into a camping area which requires licensure by state statute. And that's what those other parties had done as well.
Recreational vehicles aren't an issue here, right?
No, they, they haven't been, it's just how the definition reads.
Okay, so, all right, I'm thinking of military tents here. Military tent counts as one?
Yeah, I would probably go with the bigger one.
Military ten-man tent counts as one?
Correct. We don't have a tent size.
So if they have more people, they have to just get bigger tents?
Yep. That would be a, that would be the way I would suggest to go, is big tents. We don't regulate the cook stove.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll move the recommended action with the changes that we suggested.
Can we get the animal unit number? I think Commissioner Lenzmeyer was gonna talk about that.
Not so much the animal unit number, but, uh, uh, is there a way that we can inject a little more flexibility into this whole process? And I suppose you could make that case for a wide variety of, of regulation. And, uh, also, uh, it isn't just land use. We, we approved quite a few, uh, regulatory actions. And, um, you know, I was in a campaign for him this time around, and for him in the future. My, uh, my observation is, are we really accomplishing what we're setting out to do? Or are we just making it more difficult for folks? And then we take a victory lap, and things are all better. And I don't know how to address that big picture stuff, but, uh, I think it merits consideration. Just, uh, observation. This, uh, one crisis at a time, let's deal with what we're doing right here, right now. But, uh, maybe that's a topic for that retreat, beginning of the year that we do. Uh, so, uh, it's big picture stuff, so that's, uh, that's the only time that we're all together with our various department heads. I don't know if I made any damn sense or not, but, uh, hopefully, uh, we can always, uh, be optimistic.
This is a unique business in, within this county. And if you haven't been there, I would recommend going there. It's very unique, very well, worthwhile going to. But before, I'd like to hear from Hempyr's, if there's, they're now comfortable with the changes that it made. Yeah, June, could you, yeah, go to the microphone, please? Are there any other questions that you still have?
Hi, my name is June. I'm one of the. Sure, you think I'm tall? This is Jeff.
And I'm Jack. The other thing that we were just wondering was signage, because, um, there are some regulations, it's number eleven on that. it's number 11 on that conditions that they recommended. We want our zone to be confined, we want people to know that it's there, we want them to feel like they are in these countries, that's not anywhere else in the state. And with being restricted to the signs, we feel like they don't get that big first impression when they walk in with that, those signs. We have a lot of people that we, we are in the middle of the country, or hills are between us, so there isn't much real interest to see to look at some of those signs that could potentially hold less, and this is an incoming, kind of, in the city.
So what we currently have, have there, that's the only thing that you.
That was one of.
Are there any other issues still remain?
Um, we have a recommendation saying, as far as the overnights, they, as many as long as they're under the law. Yep, and then the mill fill that can be placed anywhere that we have, we are looking at with this, we have a building that will be going in that we will need to have, that way to be, on the antigravic, that is not people that lands, and that community, is that still applicable? Yeah, so we do, put that, yeah, I said that, that will have a.
If it's not within the delineated area, then yes. Mr. Chair, the planning commission did recommend five overnights specifically as a condition. So if you wanted to remove the number of overnights and make it unlimited, that would be different than what the planning commission.
Have any of their overnights ever been a problem or complaint oriented?
We have not received any complaints on them.
I would recommend removing that condition.
They only complain, don't have this from us.
No.
No, because we worry.
Sure.
It goes there. It's a benefit.
Hold the rest of the board, please.
Yeah, I, I know.
Yeah. What the heck? Why is five magic?
Is, is it worded in?
Why not four? Why not six? Why not 16?
I, I think originally there was discussion with the planning commission about numbers because they thought there were, that they should try to manage a, a number of overnights. They didn't give any specific reasoning. Statute really relates to the number of tents or RVs on site, not the number of nights that you do.
So that's where the confusion is.
Possibly. So it's, it's really related to numbers of, of tents and RVs, not frequency, right?
So we can move, remove the frequency?
Yeah. I mean, you know, there's problems, these folks come off as hands-on operators and if they're making things such that it's not enjoyable to the rest of their guests, it's good business to go deal with it.
Mr. Mayor.
So the sign issue that number 11 and 13 before had to be removed, is that the recommendation that you have stated?
Mr. Chair, I can weigh in on that. The county board is not the entity to vary from sign standards, that's your board of adjustment. So unfortunately, the county board cannot remove that because then it would be, you'd be taking on the role of a board of adjustment.
So they would have to go to the board of adjustment to get the sign?
To request that larger sign, yes.
Right, and we did not count any of the, we did not count a lot of the signs on the property, the individual, the directional signs, educational signs, the, the animal signs throughout the property, the ones that we were counting were the outward facing signs to the public. And the 32 square foot is a standard across the board for egg oriented businesses.
But again, this is a unique, a unique agricultural business in the county.
Yeah.
Which would be an argument for the board of adjustment as to why they would find maybe a value to a, something unique to the property for an egg oriented business.
Mr. Mayor?
Is it appropriate or inappropriate for the county board to make a recommendation on that issue to the board of adjustment?
They're a quasi judicial body, so whether you recommend something or not.
We can request.
Right, but they are not held to, to the standards and the process that you have.
They can still do what they want.
Correct.
But there's nothing.
Based on the facts that they have in the statute.
But there's nothing that prohibits us from making a recommendation or a request.
It's unusual, but what the heck, this is an unusual property.
Then I, I wouldn't, you don't need to make that perhaps in the form of a motion, but is there consensus that they look at that?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. We can do it that way.
Anything else? So you're comfortable then with, with what we have? Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your service and what you provide.
Oh, yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay, is there a motion then with all the changes?
Okay, the 50 animal units, then that's, stay, okay, that seems agreeable. Do we need, do we need to reiterate what, what's all changing for the motion or are we comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. I'll move the recommended action with the changes requested and suggested.
Sir, second.
I can second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. The motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
I would like the minutes to show that we're requesting or recommending, there's no official action, but the consensus of the board was to look at that sign issue.
Recommendation to the board of adjustment.
Right. Recommendation, request, or whatever you want to word it.
I'd rather, it'd be a request. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to acknowledge your autonomy, you know? Recommendation makes it sound like we got something to say about it.
That request is fine.
Thank you, anything else?
Mr. Chair, I just have one additional item and I had updated you as the commissioner for that district a few weeks ago. We had Genevieve and Elmer Majeski here in Avon Township requesting temporary housing on their property in order to sell 40 acres to their grandson. And so I wanted to report back to the board, I've shared this with Commissioner Mergan, that they were able to obtain interim use permit from the township, they were able to obtain a provisional use from the county and a variance, and so the 40 acre land split to the grandson has occurred and he will be building his home in the spring. So I wanted to report that back. Like I said, I've been emailing Commissioner Mergan, but the whole board likely wanted an update on that.
Thank you for your work on that.
I do have one miscellaneous item. Commissioner Notch asked me to give you an update on the egg plastics. We have Tim Oswald, who is our new tri-county coordinator, has been working with the haulers to find some, um, haulers that are willing to work with the egg plastic, and he's been working with waste management. They are coming up with some ideas as to how to manage and where to bring plastic. We also have a person in the county, a business in the county that also uses recycled plastic. So we may have another option and Tim has been looking into that as well. So there will be more at the dairy advisory committee with egg plastic. So we are, we are working on not only with Revolution Plastic potentially, but also we might have our own plastic business that may utilize plastic within the county. So keeping it all local and, and working with a, a local business would be also preferable. So we are working on their hauler contracts and hauler information at this point with the recycling of the egg plastic.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Michelle, your entry?
Thank you.
We're back. At this time, we're going to recess our regular county board meeting to conduct the Human Services Board meeting, and we, we have Melissa Huberty here along with Renee Fraundees.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator. And today, the Human Services Department has six consent items on pages ninety-seven through one hundred and twelve, items G1 through G6, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
On the consent items?
There are seconds.
Second.
Any discussion? The bone favors signified with aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you. The regular board item we have today is on page one hundred and thirteen. It's item H1, and I have with me Renee Fraundees, who is the Division Director of the Public Health Division in the Human Services Department, and she's going to talk about the Nurses in Action Consortium. Minnesota is seeing a rise in what's been called Diseases of Despair, which includes alcohol abuse, opioid addiction, suicide, and other illnesses. And Ms. Fraundees is here to talk about an upcoming consortium to address suicide awareness.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. You may recall that I participated in a Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Public Health Nurse Leader fellow a couple of years ago. That was really focused on how do we get nurses more civically engaged and create community or a sense of community. Well, this is one of the benefits of participating that I think our community is actually going to see. So what I'm sharing with you today is a joint project that I have been working on with, with Centra Care, with the Veterans' Administration Services, and then with Public Health, Stearns County Public Health. And what we're doing is attempting to get our nurses involved in our communities more to address overriding issues that we're seeing. So on page one fourteen, you'll see the agenda for this evening's first consortium. We've created a Nurses in Action Collaborative between these three entities. And the goal of these consort, or this consortium, is to, number one, educate nurses about overriding issues within our community. The second is to, in, in talking about that, identify needs or gaps that may be addressed. And then the third thing is to activate our nurses to outside of their jobs, but part of their role as a nurse leader in their community, to begin to do something about these issues. So our first one tonight is actually looking at suicide. The Veterans Administration, this is actually their top issue right now. We are seeing alarming rates of suicide in our veterans, and so this is their top priority. Centra Care, for them, it's their youth and young adults, and the risk factors that we're seeing with those populations. And then, really, from a Stearns County perspective, is around what we're beginning to see in the stress in our farmers, and the increasing number of farmers that are committing suicide in our communities. So those are the three topic areas. We have individuals that are coming or are part of our community who are actually going to be speaking about this today. We do have, I just focus in on the farming community, certain, only because this is sort of our part of this consortium. We have Keith Olander, who's actually going to come and talk. They provide stress and rural resources, and I did provide you with a brochure. I apologize for it being totally upside down. That's what happens when you don't use the professionals and you let someone like me do the copying. But this is a brochure that is available through their services and will be making available to the individuals that attend tonight. And then we also have Tricia Gilli. She's actually a county commissioner from Kitzin County, and her husband in two thousand seventeen committed suicide. He was a farmer. And so she's going to come and talk about that to our nurses as well. And then we're going to take about forty or forty-five minutes of that time to do some action planning so that when the nurses leave tonight, they will actually have activities that they're going to begin working on. So, so all of the nurses in the Centra Care system, all of the nurses in the Veterans Administration system, and all the nurses in Stearns County, Public Health, and, well, Human Services, we invited all the nurses in Human Services, and also did extend an invitation out to Benton County as well, have all been invited to this. It's only room for a hundred and twenty individuals, and we have a hundred and twenty individuals that have signed up, and we have a waiting list of about another twenty. So it's a, it's an interesting topic, I think, and a great way for us to, to get our nurses involved in the issue.
What's the limiting factor on the number of people that can be involved in?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Mr. Chair, and rest of the board, it's our space. Right now, the space that we have is a Centra Care location, and that, it only allows for us to have a hundred and twenty. So, yeah, I think we could certainly have had more, but our space only allows for that. We are providing-
Maybe something to think about in the future is to look at the program and to see if there's a way you could turn it into a traveling roadshow type thing. Because, you know, Centra Care is a wonderful place, but it's not necessarily the center of the universe.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I did send this out to my peers in the Public Health Nurse Leader Project, and there are several of them that were very interested in participating in this, and have shared this to my colleagues at the Local Public Health Association as well, and they're very interested in how well this turns out, that we could potentially have this replicated across Minnesota.
It's a little late in the process, but maybe there's still hope. This might be appropriate topic for the AMC conference.
I think that's a very good idea, especially since-
See, I'm assuming it's a quality effort, so, you know, it's a great leap of faith to start with, but the topic is certainly interesting. The, one thing that crossed my mind, do you have a breakdown, at least by age, of the folks that are committing suicide? I presume that there's, they're mostly male.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I don't have a breakdown of the age group. I could potentially get that. Our numbers in Stearns County are pretty small. We average somewhere between fifteen and twenty-two, if you look at two thousand ten to the latest data that I have, which is two thousand fifteen. So when we get such small numbers, it's kind of hard to get that without identifying individuals. We could potentially ask the Minnesota Department of Health to provide us with that data in like a ten-year span, and then give us those numbers, then we would have the ability to do that. So I could certainly get that data and, and bring that back or share that with the board.
It's not heart attack urgent, but at some point, I'd find that interesting.
Right. If you look at the statistical data, I think just in general, more likely to be younger individuals. So we have a large, what we call years of potential life lost in this particular issue. So we lose a lot of time in these individuals' lives to be productive citizens within our community. And we don't want to, we don't want to see that in anybody, but we definitely don't want to see it in our younger adults. And then, yes, it's, it tends to be more male, but certainly, we're, I think we're beginning to see female risk factors and female suicides. I think what's really important about suicides, even though our numbers really are, are low, if you look at it in comparison, it's about the ninth to tenth leading cause of death for Stearns County, is that every single one of them is preventable, every single one. And so what do we need to do to engage our communities around identifying what those risk factors are and making sure that resources are made available to those individuals? And what we're hoping to do, not only for this issue, but we have lots of nurses that live in our communities. They are very well respected by our communities. They are leaders in our communities, and we need to activate them and engage them in these issues in order to make change happen at our community level. And that's actually what we're hoping to do through this process.
Any questions, Commissioner Merrick?
I don't have a question, but I want to share something. Well, first of all, when you say this is upside down, if you hold it this way and you just flip it that way, it's right side up.
Thank you. Thank you for making me look better.
I was informed that Centra Care Health, I'm going to read here, it's on the WGLM website, we're on their radio station. Centra Care Health was awarded a one million dollar grant to help reach patients in rural areas dealing with mental health issues. A three-year grant given by the United States Health Resources and Services Administration will help increase, will help increase access for patients from cities like Belgrade, Painesville, Long Prairie, and more, to the St. Cloud Hospital's Integrated Behavioral Health Team through telehealth services. The IBH team, which includes psychotherapists and chemical dependency evaluators and other experts, will share their expertise and work directly with patients and their primary care providers to receive immediate mental health care at their own clinics. And that ties in with, with your presentation here, and I think it's, the more we can share information like that, the better off we all are, so.
Thank you. Yep.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now close the Human Services Board meeting and reconvene the regular county board meeting. We are up to the final item, which is issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
I don't have the details on this yet, but the, the annual Economic Institute that St. Cloud State holds in early February, allegedly, or just bits and pieces of information, I think is going to, the topic they're taking up, a part of the topics they're taking up is immigration-related. So it might have some merit, is I learn more about it if it's, if there's merit in us being more involved in that, at least to go see presentations. I can certainly let you know, or Dr. Willie can follow up on that and ask him. I am, King Mannion would be a logical contact on that. So that's the main thing I have to contribute to the human condition this time around. And also, yeah, I hope at some point, I don't know how you'd measure the impact of the regulatory contributions, boy, is that polite, that we make to what we do here, but gosh, I'm wondering if there is a way to, to measure that sort of thing. But, I mean, they're not all created equal. We'd like to think that everything that we pass is brilliant. I suspect that might not be the case.
Mr. Notch?
I have nothing.
Mr. Persky?
I have nothing other than just public awareness. We got a couple of big events this weekend, or this week. We got Halloween coming tomorrow, so make sure people are, you know, conscious about the little ones being out and, you know, making sure things are safe out there. Also with deer hunting, we've got the deer opener this weekend too again. Make sure then, again, that people use good safety and also wear good sports out there, so.
Mr. Merrick?
Well, the only thing, and I'm sure we're all aware of it, we urge people to get out and vote. Next Tuesday is election day, but there's opportunities before that, so get out and vote.
Dr. Williams?
How many people, how much, how active is the absentee action?
Just short of seven thousand people that have really voted.
Okay.
And that's similar pace to two years ago. So typically, it should be a down. Time, it's not a presidential, but it's, with, with three locations, I think that's helping.
Dr. Williams?
Pro- authority board meeting after this meeting.
It's a short meeting.
Mr. Notch?
One other thing, too, we are doing CASM tomorrow morning.
CASM tomorrow morning.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Anyone else? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.